Yes, Mr. Chair.
This call is now being recorded.
Okay, wel- welcome everybody. Welcome to the Public Works Gang Reduction Virtual Committee Meeting. I am joined by my colleagues, Councilmembers Rube, Buscaino, and O'Farrell. Ms. Kidd, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Bloomingfield?
Bloomingfield, present.
Rue?
Present.
Buscaino?
Present.
And O'Farrell?
Present.
You have a call, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. At this time, we're going to start this meeting by taking public comment on all items. Please note, because this is a special meeting, we will not have general public comment. Public comment must be related to the items on the agenda. Callers, you'll have one minute if you're speaking on one item, and two minutes if you're speaking on multiple items. Ms. Kidd, would you please provide the phone number for the public to call in and comment on agenda items?
Members of the public who would like to offer a public comment on the items listed on the agenda should call 1-669-254-5252 and use meeting ID #1618294030 and press the number sign. Press the number sign again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak.
Great, thank you. And for folks who are calling in to comment, please remember to mute the device that you're listening to the meeting on before you begin your public comment. And with that, if we could have the first caller.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. For the roll, may I please call Martinez? Just to clarify that she's absent today.
Yes, she is excused from this and future meetings.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, do we have any callers?
Caller, please state your name and which item you'd like to speak on. Caller, please state your name and which item you would like to speak on. We're moving on to the next caller. Caller, please state your name and which item you would like to speak on. Phone number ends in 1-9. Caller, okay, that caller has left the meeting.
Hello?
Hi, please state your-
Please state your name and which item or items you'd like to speak on.
Hola, puede dar su nombre y en que quiere hablar hoy? Okay, mi nombre es Caridad Vázquez. Soy vendedor ambulante y quiero introducción en español, por favor.
Okay, un momento, we have a translator?
I will be translating into English. Her name is Caridad Vázquez. She is a street vendor.
Sí, sí quiero español.
Uh, yo voy a traducirle a inglés.
Okay, muchas gracias. Pues antes que nada quería decirle a los concejales, a Berto, a Buscaino, y a la señora Martinez, que como vendedora, yo no he vendido cuatro meses. Mi preocupación es esta del programa que están haciendo del fresco.
My name, I would like to tell Councilmembers Martinez and Buscaino that I have not been able to vend in four months.
Sí, mi preocupación es esta, que por qué a nosotros no nos pueden hacer un arreglo para poder trabajar, porque no hemos vendido, no tenemos para la renta.
I would like to know why you can't make some changes because we have not been able to vend.
Que nos hicieran el favor de que haga una introducción con el del farmer para que también nosotros podamos trabajar, porque no hemos trabajado.
We would like an introduction to the farmers because we would like to work, because we haven't been able to work.
Porque no hay todavía permisos de carrito, no tenemos, este, cómo poder trabajar. Digo, ya es injusto que ya nos dejen trabajar, porque ¿qué vamos a hacer?
There are still not permits for carts, and it's not fair that we haven't been given the opportunity to work.
Y a nombre de todos mis compañeros que vendemos comida, son más de dos mil personas que no han estado trabajando en la calle. Por favor, concejales, apiádense de nosotros, por favor, haga una moción.
We are more than 2,000 vendors that haven't been able to vend. Councilmembers, please give us that opportunity. Gracias señora, ya tiene su tiempo.
Gracias, muy amable.
Muchas gracias, thank you. Do we have additional callers?
Caller, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Caller, please state your name and what items you'd like to speak on.
Si, buenos dias.
Si, buenos dias, good morning.
Este, mi nombre es Ana Cruz, soy una vendedora de Hollywood.
My name is Anna Cruz, and I'm a vendor in Hollywood.
Estoy llamando para expresar mi preocupación en el número del artículo cinco y seis del programa de al fresco.
I'm calling to state my concern on items five and six and the program, the alfresco program.
Necesitamos un periodo de recuperación con el permiso sin costo para poder regresar a trabajar en estos momentos. Los 291 que cuesta el permiso es un costo que no podemos pagar, porque ahorita estamos luchando también para pagar la renta de nuestros hogares.
We need a period of time where we don't pay fees because the 291 is too high and we need to pay our rent.
Y también nos gustaría que hubiera más tiempo para educación, para los permisos requeridos para la venta, que no se nos criminalice otra vez nuevamente, porque tenemos temor de salir a trabajar.
We would also like more time on the education piece because we need more education to learn how we can vend and to work.
Y nos gustaría también que salubridad apruebe un carro apropiado para nosotros que somos vendedores de la acera. No trabajamos en la carretera, no podemos comprar remolques que son sumamente costosos. Queremos un carro apropiado para nuestra venta.
We would like county help to approve a push cart that works for us because we cannot tow, so we can't have them in the street.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Gracias señora. Do we have additional callers?
Caller, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hola, me escucha.
Okay, moving on to the next caller. Caller, please state your name and what item you would like to speak on. Caller, please state your name and what item you would like to speak on.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there, my name is Maybeagirl, and I actually was just calling in to listen, not make a public comment, but since I am here, I will make a public comment that I agree with all of the public speakers in terms of the vending programs to make them easier for Angelenos to work on the streets with carts. In fact, I think that there should not be a permit fee at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks ma'am.
Caller, please state your name and what items you would like to speak on. Caller, please state your name and what items you would like to speak on.
¿Qué dice?
Puede dar su nombre y en qué quiere hablar.
Okay, sí, mi nombre es Claudia Elizabeth Moreno, y yo quiero hablar para, de los vendedores ambulantes, para el número cinco y seis, que va a estar ahora.
My name is Claudia Elizabeth Moreno, and I would like to speak on items five and six. Puede hablar.
Okay, mi nombre es Claudia Moreno. Yo soy vendedora ambulante de área de los callejones. Estamos muy preocupados por el programa alfresco, ya que varios-
Espera un momento. My name is Anna Moreno, and I am a sidewalk vendor in the alley area.
Estamos muy preocupados por el programa alfresco.
We're very concerned about the alfresco program.
Ya que es injusto, ya que la ciudad no nos ha dejado trabajar como vendedores ambulantes.
It's not fair that the city has not allowed us to work as sidewalk vendors.
Estamos siendo afectados por esta pandemia, y no tenemos trabajo.
We are being affected by this pandemic, and we do not have work.
Queremos trabajar legalmente, tenemos diez años luchando por este programa.
We want to work legally, and we've been working on this program for ten years.
Y queremos trabajar conjuntamente con ustedes para que nos apoyen a salir adelante.
And we want to work together with you so that you can support us to move forward.
Ya que nuestros ahorros han debilitado, y no podemos tener ahorita suficiente dinero.
Now that our savings have dwindled, and we don't have enough money right now.
Necesitamos que nos ayuden a tener espacios para poder vender.
We need your help to help us get space to sell.
Necesitamos ayuda con los permisos de salubridad, y que los restaurantes también tengan inspección al igual que nosotros.
We need your help with the county health permits, and that restaurants also have these inspections.
Queremos un permiso temporal para las personas con su licencia de manejar comida.
We want a temporary permit for those who have city permits to vend in the city. Yes, a simple.
Okay, todos queremos trabajar unidos y así salir adelante.
We want to all work together and move forward.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name and what item you would like to speak on.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Anna Umaña.
Good morning, my name is, uh, ¿cómo se llama su nombre, perdón?
Anna Umaña.
My name is Anna Umaña.
Sí, mi preocupación es con el artículo cinco y seis, por el programa alfresco.
My concern is with item five and six and the alfresco program.
Quisiera que si pudiéramos ayudarnos para, que tuviéramos, este, las mismas oportunidades.
We would like you to help us to have the same opportunities.
Desde el mes de marzo, no hemos trabajado, y necesitamos de que nos ayuden con los, con programas para, para los vendedores de comida.
Since the month of March, we have not been able to sell, and we need your help to help us with the sidewalk vending permits.
Yo soy vendedora de la May y la 47.
I am a seller on May and 44th.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You too, ma'am.
Caller, please state your name and what items you would like to speak on. Caller, please put your-
Hola. Sí, mi nombre es Esmeralda Azul, y soy de Glenox y Arroyo.
My name is Esmeralda Azul, and I'm on Glenox and Mayor.
Eh, yo estoy para las cinco y seis, y mi preocupación es lo mismo que todos mis compañeros.
I'm calling on items five and six, and my concerns are the same as my counterparts.
Y quisiera que nos tienen las mismas oportunidades para vender, pues es un trabajo honesto, en el que, pues, todos estamos luchando para el futuro de nuestros hijos, y creo que es algo, um, que no se nos puede negar, y quiero, um, nos gustaría tener la ayuda.
Espera un momento. I would like to have the same opportunities as others. We are honest workers, and we are working for the future of our children.
Yes, I-
Puedes?
Ah, okay, okay. Y, este, pues nada más eso, que, pues, que todos estamos preocupados, pues tenemos bastante tiempo sin trabajar, y, este, y, pues, nosotros queremos trabajar honestamente.
We are all concerned because we have had a lot of time without work, and we want to work honestly.
Ya, sería. Y ya nomás para cerrar, este, vuelvo a repetir, mi nombre es Jasmine Zull de Glenox y Arroyo en San Fernando.
Just to repeat, my name is Jasmine Zull, and I'm a vendor on Glenox and San Fernando.
Muchas gracias, señorita.
Thank you very much. Caller, please state your name and what item you would like to speak on.
Hola, buenos dias.
Hi, good morning.
Uh, mi nombre es Pedro Varías, y yo vivo en área de, de San Fernando.
Hi, my name is Pedro Varías, and I live in the area of San Fernando.
El motivo de mi llamada es porque, pues, este, sí me preocupa, este, pues, lo que está pasando ahorita, lo que es con, con nosotros, los vendedores ambulantes.
The reason for my call is because I am worried about what is happening with sidewalk vendors.
Porque se aprobó lo que es el programa alfresco, pero incluyó a los restaurantes, pero no está incluyendo a los vendedores ambulantes.
Because the alfresco program was approved, and it's including restaurants, but not sidewalk vendors.
Y nosotros como vendedores, pues pedimos, este, lo que es a la, a la ciudad para que nos apoye, nos ayude, este, con, con vender lo que es en las aceras, y ya aprobaron a los, a los restaurantes para vender en la acera, pues que nos ayuden a nosotros los vendedores también.
And us as vendors would like to have approval to vend on sidewalks just as the restaurants have received that approval.
Y referente a los carritos, a los permisos, pues como todavía no hay, este, un carrito específico, uh, queremos que la ciudad, pues, nos apoye, este, por el momento, a vender, siquiera por este año, sin el carrito.
And since there are not permits for the specific carts, I would like that the city help us get those permits.
Creo que es todo lo que yo puedo, este, agregar, lo que es en este comentario. Gracias.
I think that's all I need to add, thank you. Just one moment. Caller, please state your name and what item you would like to speak on. Caller, please state your name and what item you would like to speak on. Puede dar su nombre y en qué quiere hablar.
Bueno, ¿eso es para mí?
Sí.
Okay, mira, mi nombre es Maritza Rivera. Soy vendedora ambulante de Los Ángeles en Glenox y Arroyo.
My name is Maritza, and I am a vendor on Glenox and Arroyo.
Estoy llamando para expresar mi preocupación del artículo cinco y seis con el programa alfresco.
I'm calling to, with my concerns on item five and six with respect to the alfresco program.
¿Nos preocupa que el programa alfresco reemplace a una comunidad que necesita de trabajo?
We're concerned that the alfresco program is replacing a group of people that need work.
Afectando gravemente a nuestras familias.
Affecting our families greatly.
Uh, no los negamos a seguir las reglas, pero necesitamos apoyo con la educación, y que la ciudad, la ciudad asuma su liderazgo al trabajar con el condado.
We want to follow the rules, but we need the city to take a leadership role with the county.
Para determinar los permisos de salubridad y los diseños de carros adecuados para nuestra venta.
To determine the appropriate carts for selling our wares.
A precio, a, a un precio razonable, y también, y también que nos dieran un poco más de tiempo con los de los, para educarnos y tener los permisos adecuados.
At a reasonable price, and also give us some more time to educate ourselves.
Sería todo.
That's all.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. Caller, please state your name and what item you would like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you would like to speak on. Moving to the next caller. Caller, please state- Please state your name and what item you would like to speak on.
Gracias.
Hola, puede, puede dar su nombre y en qué quiere hablar. Caller, please state your name and what item you would like to speak on. Caller, please state your name and what item you would like to speak on. This caller has been called a few times and has not been responsive. They're going to get removed from the meeting. Caller, please state your name and what item you would like to speak on.
Hello?
Hola, puede dar su nombre y en qué quiere hablar.
Sí, mi nombre es Miguel Ángel Pérez, eh, soy vendedor.
My name is Miguel Ángel Pérez, and I am a sidewalk vendor.
Soy vendedor de Exposition Park.
I sell in Exposition Park.
Eh, sobre el tema que quiero hablar, sobre el cinco y el seis.
I would like to speak on items five and six.
Sobre, el programa de alfresco.
About the alfresco program.
Ya que es preocupante porque, eh, para los restaurantes autorizaron ese permiso de la acera sin ningún costo.
For restaurants, they created this program for the sidewalk without a cost.
Y los vendedores ambulantes han luchado por diez años para que les dejan vender en la acera, eh, para vender comida, sin embargo, el-
Sidewalk vendors, sorry, the sidewalk vendors have fought for ten years to be able to fight on the side, to vend on the sidewalk.
Sin embargo, el condado no, no ha hecho nada para los carritos especiales para vender comida en la acera.
The county has not done anything to help with the specialized carts to sell on the sidewalk.
Ya que la reunión que tuvimos en la Washington y la Gran, eh, el año pasado.
The meeting that we had on Washington and Grand last year.
Nos dieron un presupuesto de quince mil nomás, el plano.
They gave us a fifteen thousand dollar estimate for just a plan.
Pero, sin embargo, a ellos, yo creo que le, tienen bastante fondo para que trabaja en eso, porque nosotros queremos legalmente nuestra venta de comida, y también, este, que tenga todo, lo, lo requisito que nos pida la ciudad, pero no hay un carrito para vender comida en la acera.
We think they have the resources to put together a plan, but they have not been supporting us to be able to get the carts that we can sell on the sidewalk, that we can sell food from on the sidewalk.
Solamente gracias.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Gracias.
Caller, please state your name and what item you would like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you would like to speak on. Puede dar su nombre y en qué artículo desea hablar. Caller is not responsive, they will be removed. Please state your name and what item you would like to speak on. You are unmuted. Please state your name and what item you would like to speak on. Puede dar su nombre y en qué artículo desea hablar. Caller is not responsive, they will be removed from the meeting. And that satisfies public comment.
Okay, thank you, and, and good job, Cecy, with the, uh, translation as well. Thank you for that. So, uh, colleagues, unless there is an objection, I'd like to move items one, three, and eight on consent. I don't see or hear any objections. Consequently, we will call the roll for items one, three, and eight together on consent. Ms. Kidd, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Bloomingfield?
Bloomingfield, aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Thank you. Buscaino? Councilmember Buscaino? Councilmember O'Farrell?
Aye.
And we'll go back to Councilmember Buscaino.
Temporarily not here, we can, we can come back. I mean, three votes is enough to pass this with a majority, but we can, we can come back and take another vote when he returns. Um, so, I'd like us to move to items five and six and take those items up together. Uh, Ms. Kidd, could you please read those items to get, uh, as well, so we can get started?
Item five is a motion by Buscaino and Rodriguez, and an amending motion by Buscaino, Bonin, and Price relative to the ability to utilize public streets and adjacent sidewalks for outdoor dining and pedestrian-only access, and establish a no-cost street vendor permit process during the COVID-19 local emergency, refunding all vending permit fees, and ensuring that sidewalk vendors are eligible for said outdoor dining program. This item is also referred to the Economic Development Committee. Item number six is a Board of Public Works report relative to the sidewalk and park vending program permit extension and fee deferment. This item is also referred to the Economic Development Committee.
Great, thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm back, I'm sorry. I take a quick recess. Before we take some, should we, why don't we, uh, re-vote on the consent items so Mr. Buscaino can, or, or actually, can you just have him vote directly, or do we need to re-vote entirely?
We'll do the vote entirely, so that we have it all together for the public.
Okay, gonna go to, uh, vote again on the consent items one, three, and eight.
Thank you. Bloomingfield?
Bloomingfield, aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to items five and six, just a, a few words to get us started. We're, we're in very difficult times right now, and I think, times that we've never experienced before. The negative economic impact caused by COVID-19 is being felt across so many different job sectors, including government. I don't think it's known yet how big the impact of the city will be. Um, when sidewalk vending was created, the goal was to achieve full-cost recovery through the creation of a permit system. We're nowhere near that point. So how do we balance all the competing needs we're being asked to deal with? At this point, we're already subsidizing the sidewalk and park vending program. Question is, how will we continue to subsidize the program? Does sidewalk vending merit a subsidy? Yes, I certainly think so. The owners of these microenterprises have been hit extremely hard, and it's incumbent upon us to try to help them. But as we move forward, we need to keep in mind all the pending requests for funding and reinvestment that we're going to face as a city. So, before we begin the discussion, I, I want to present, uh, recommendations for item five and six, just so you know where, where I think we should be going, and so we can talk about, within the context of those recommendations as well. So for item five, I'm going to recommend that we adopt the motion, and adopt the amending motion, recommendations two and three, and amend recommendation four to read, quote, "Request departments report back on including sidewalk vending in the L.A. alfresco dining program." and amend recommendation four to read, quote, "Request departments report back on including sidewalk vending in the L.A. Alfresco Dining Program." For item six, I'm going to recommend that we adopt recommendations A, B as in Boy, and D as in David in the Board of Public Works report and extend the sidewalk and park vending permit program enrollment period through December 31st, 2020. All right, so to get us, to kick us off, I'm going to ask Adele Hashkahalil to kick us off. Um, Adele, can you provide us with an overview of the work your department has done during the first six months of the sidewalk vending program and the recommendations before us, as I stated them?
Sure. Good morning, Councilmember, Mr. Chair and Councilmembers. I have also with me my team, Greg Spatz, I have also Martin Schlager, Gary Harris, but also we have our partners from DOT that will can provide more information regarding alfresco. Available damage show is available from DOT. You know, last, 2019 was a great year for us when we legalized vending in Los Angeles. We recognize that, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, these are microenterprises, they're a central part of our livelihood, our community, and we wanted to legalize that and we provided the tools to provide rules and regulations and, and to put in place. Um, in, at the end of the year, a couple of things happened. One is we established a permitting program for vendors. At the same time, we actually created an on-call list of outreach and community outreach list of companies that can help reach out and work with the, with the vendors on the permitting process, but also creating outreach and education. We started the process and we provided, with your support, a, a, a six-month window for the street vendors to obtain a permit with a used fee that, that your council adopted at 291, which is fifty percent almost. And that was going to go till June of 2020 to be available. Um, and as you know, we started the process, we started the outreach and working with the, uh, uh, EWDB Department of Economic and Workforce Development Department and the Business Resource Centers to get the word out and we actually contracted with four of the eight outreach companies to develop the materials and the information and start the outreach process. With the COVID-19, you know, coming in and kind of upending everything that we have, uh, we basically put a stall on our outreach efforts, uh, made, you know, vending, uh, one of the things that could not, you could not basically vent because of safer home and people really upended the whole vending program. Uh, we've had about four hundred and fifty permits that we approved, fifty of them were for food vending and we really, um, kind of got a stall and we were working with folks to, uh, do it by appointment, to issue permits by appointment. Recognizing that the COVID-19 had a huge hit on, on the vending community, we wanted to come in and do a report to the Board of Public Courts and hopefully come to your council. Thank you for having us quickly before you. We think that we need to really help vendors, we need to support vendors, especially in these tough times, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair. So, what, one of the things that we wanted to do is, is return some of the money that people had paid temporarily and, and basically, when we recommended to have it be deferred, so return the money that people have paid already for permits and defer the return of the payment till December 31st. Although the Board of Public Courts in recommendation A, in our board report, basically asked also to consider waiving that for the first year. Uh, we also wanted to extend the, uh, the period of, uh, the enrollment period with discounted rate to, uh, uh, eighteen months, so if you had a permit, it would be valid for eighteen months. Uh, I believe there's a, uh, a motion by Councilman Price, approved by Council, that extended that to, uh, the, uh, the, uh, June 30th, next year, uh, 2021. Uh, what we are, I'm sorry. Yes, so, uh, really, I think the biggest issue that we are looking for is vending today is legal and vendors can go out. The only issue I think that I want to bring back to the focus is food vendors. Food vendors are, by county health orders, cannot vend on the streets of Los Angeles unless they have a county health order. And that's really where the issue that we have. So, if you are a non-food vendor in Los Angeles, you can vent today. Uh, and, and basically, it's legal to vent as long as you follow the rules and regulations that have been adopted to create safe distance and open sidewalks. So, the message is, non-food vendors can vent. If you are a food vendor with a county health permit, we have fifty of them under our permit, they can vent today, continue to vent. That's legal and they can do it. The question that we have is, there's a lot of food vendors out there that cannot vent, cannot obtain a county health permit for food vending. And, and what we wanted to do is to, and I heard the, the speakers, uh, we wanted to really, uh, really work with the county health department on how we can develop a more simplified, streamlined process with, with maybe some less standards that, because if you use the lens of a restaurant, you will never be able to permit a, a sidewalk vendor for food. You have to use some simplified process. So, we've been doing a, a stakeholder meetings with our, uh, uh, vending stakeholders every three weeks, even during the pandemic. We had one last Thursday and we invited the county health to come to the meeting. The good news out of that one is that we agreed to create a subgroup with the county health and the county health agreed and actually communicated that in writing to the Board of Public Courts, uh, last week, that they're willing to work with us and with a subgroup of the vendors and the vending advocates on actually developing a simplified food vending cart that can be approved by county health that works for the vendors and can be streamlined, so you don't have to go through a whole approval process for that type. So, it should be standard vending that can be done. We can maybe work on helping getting it made in a, in economic cost, so the cost can go down. So, that process is moving forward. We started last Thursday and I'm excited that, that we are actually working on this issue because I think that's the biggest obstacle that we have for street vending. The current food vendors that we have in Los Angeles, the majority, uh, cannot obtain a county health permit and we need to have that changed and we would ask for your help. So, we're excited about your recommendation. I think, to me, the question, what you recommended, Mr. Chair, is something that we support and we continue. We're actually going out and doing the outreach again, uh, reach out to the, the, uh, the stakeholders, to the vending community in multiple languages to ensure that they understand, uh, what are the rules and regulations, that they can vent unless they're a food vendor, they have to go through the county health. But I think we need some time, but also we need support. Uh, you know, I'm not sure exactly how we're going to be able to stand up this program to provide either microloans or some help for vendors to obtain the, the permitted cart for food vending, but I think we can come up with something and I'm glad that we're able to push that last week and the county was willing to participate and help us in this issue. And I'm going to assure you and, and the, the, our partners in the vending community because I really believe that vending is critical part of our livelihood, our community, our, 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 who we are in Los Angeles and we need to work on it and make sure that, that we remove all the obstacles before them. Uh, my staff has been working out, dealing with issues regarding vending before the COVID-19 to ensure that people are following rules and regulations, protecting vendors. Vendors need protection because they can be, uh, blackmailed by many others and we want to make sure that we are there for them to help them, uh, be able to vent safely. Uh, also, we want to make sure that we are providing a safe passage along sidewalks and also to make sure that we are providing a balance between our brick and mortar businesses and the vending community. We're proud that we moved quickly on getting the rules and regulations in place, uh, but as, as you know, it's just with the COVID-19 it changed the game and made a lot of these vendors, uh, not able to vent because of the safer home orders. Uh, they're not essential businesses, uh, but now they're able to vent like anybody else, ready to do business except for the food vendors. Uh, Mr. Chair, I think I'm open for questions, uh, and, and we can go from there.
Great, thank you. Um, it's, it is a critical issue and I know there's been some, some legislation proposed. I think Rodriguez in studio proposed potentially using COVID, uh, funds as, as this is an economic development recovery tool to help with the vending permit fees. So, there may be some avenues there. But help us understand a little bit better, Adele, the, um, the barriers in terms of the county. I know you've been doing a great job of outreach and working to help them get past these, but what, what are those barriers for the county health permit that they're facing?
You know, the, um, and that's, that's really something that what I really honed down on. Actually, I wanted, I got on the call last Thursday just specifically to put that on the table. You know, one is running water, uh, and being able to properly handle food safely and without running water, you cannot really have a proper, uh, you know, uh, safe, uh, food handling. The idea that we were looking at is, and that's something that we discussed with the, with the county health, does the food preparation has to be done on the street? Can the food preparation be done somewhere else, off-site? And have the off-site location be permitted for, for food processing and have the vending be actually just a warm and serve type vending where the requirements will be much less. So, really, it's, if you look at what the lens is being used by county health for permitting vendors, it's the same as a restaurant. Having a running water, having the ability to, to rinse in different sinks. It's just, it makes it so difficult for a small cart to be able to do that. So, the things that we're placing on the table is, can we establish, one idea that I had, one of the ideas I thought, you know, can we permit a, a, a home kitchen, uh, as a, a preparation of food for a vendor? Uh, or can we have a joint commissary or commercial kitchen that can provide a way for vendors to prepare their food and take it in their cart that they can warm and serve? So, the issue is, is just having to comply with many of the rules that we have, mainly running water and, and multiple sinks for this cleaning and disinfection. So, so that's really where the biggest issue you have.
And, and, I mean, that's got to be the problem all across the country. What do, what do the other cities do that have allowed vending?
I mean, I'm, we're looking into it. I know New York has done it, so I'm looking for trying to find more. But to me, I think there's a lot of places that allowed a, a, uh, a common, a commercial kitchen. I was listening to a story in, in Oakland, I, and I was watching about, um, an immigrant that went through and, and made a livelihood for their kids and they went to college. And the story was about immigrants making it in the, in the country. And the story was about this, this vendor, food vendor, that she would go early in the morning to a commercial, uh, kitchen, that she would go in, prepare the food, and then she would go in and sell it at that one vending location without having to prepare. So, so to me, I think it's, uh, it's, there's multiple tools, but I think what we're thinking about is minimizing what's needed. Public health cannot be sacrificed, we told that to the county, but I think we can really have, have a little more streamlined standards and having some kind of warming of food, uh, you know, and doesn't, and we can create some system or some cart to allow that. We're looking for New York. New York has done a lot of work on, on carts on the street, uh, you know, whether it's hub box stand, et cetera. Most of it is being steamed, but we're going to be looking at all these solutions and all the options. But really, what I'm excited about is some of the vendors themselves have ideas and in Thursday's meeting, they are willing to be part of the solution. They want to propose some ideas of what a cart would look like and what we need to do is work with the county health to say, can we now permit this? Or can we do it in combination of something else that can reduce the cost, reduce the impact, and make it available to a lot of people? So, I'm telling you, I'm excited about the discussion we had Thursday with county health and the, the vending advocates and I'm, I'm going to work hard on, on getting this solution and finding a, you know, a different alternative to make it work. But at this point, with the rules that we have in county health, very few of the, uh, vending, food vending can be permitted without a major investment in a cart or a, a, a larger equipment. And you heard some of the numbers raised by some of the speakers at fifteen thousand or more. Uh, so we're trying to bring it down to something reasonable that we can work with and continue supporting them.
Speaking of numbers, what's, what is the fiscal impact during the payments until the 31st?
So, it's, uh, if you look at the number that we have already permitted, it's four hundred and fifty, uh, uh, permit fees and at 291, it's about a hundred thirty thousand dollars. Um, so that's the number that we're looking at right now. It's, we have to return about a hundred thirty thousand and our recommendation is that will be paid back, uh, at some point, uh, in, in December to continue the permit. Uh, but if you waive it completely, it's a hundred thirty thousand dollars. Uh, we have not seen the, the, uh, the uptake of the permits and a lot of it is because many of the, many of the permittees or the vendors are food vendors and that's, uh, that's a big issue for them. Um, and we are looking into the option, but a hundred thirty thousand, what we have received in permit fees.
That, that's just the defer. That's not the full impact on the budget.
Yeah, I mean, uh, if, if you look at the full impact, it's, it's going to be in the millions, couple of millions if you completely because you have to pay for the inspectors, which it's already being subsidized by the general fund since we're not getting the revenue in place. Uh, but if, if you have to permit, uh, and, and, and these vendors and not having them pay and waive the fee, the impact overall will be much more. So, you're looking at probably twenty thousand vendors. You multiply that by the fee, actual fee is about five forty-one, uh, so it, it starts to be in the, in the, in the millions of dollars.
Okay. Um, and then, as it relates to the alfresco program, how are the departments going to ensure that, that if the vendors with the valid city permits are incorporated in the program?
You know, we're working with the mayor's office and LEDOT and, and we're, we're going to be announcing soon that, that all, uh, permitted food vendors will be included as part of alfresco. But I'll have Dan and Elaine, um, and the team from DOT answer that question.
Mr. Chair, Major General Manager from LEDOT, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, the question is, is how the departments are going to ensure that the vendors with the valid permits are incorporated into the program? Only the vendors with the valid permits?
The, the department is currently, uh, reviewing recommendations for, uh, including street vending into this program, uh, but the Department of Transportation doesn't have a, a, a regulatory role to ensure who's participating, you know, in individual installations.
The, the plan, uh, Councilmembers and Dan, is that the, the, the public will not, it'd be the same portal that restaurants use through DOT to apply for, uh, participation in alfresco, but if it's a street vendor, uh, with the permit, that information will come to us to, uh, support that process. Uh, that's really what the plan that we're working on right now. Uh, but our staff in Streets L.A. will be the one, uh, helping vet that process and the location and will support, uh, uh, these vendors and where they're going to, uh, be able to, uh, vent and where, so make sure there's a coordination. But in terms of the, our thinking is the portal for the alfresco, be the same portal coming through for everyone, except in the back end. We will support, uh, supporting the, uh, the folks from the vending... from the vending community that have a permit in terms of where they're gonna be located and, and, uh, and helping them out to, uh, be part of this program.
And my last question, and I wanna open it up to my colleagues, I apologize. Uh, it, but it relates to what you're just saying here, is, is it the locations? There's only so much space available. How, uh, how are permits gonna be dealt with that are requesting the same area? And, and what happens, you know, if, if a vendor gets a location in front of a, a restaurant, um, and then the restaurant wants that location, uh, for, you know, selling the same type of product or something to that effect? How, how are you gonna deal with those conflicts?
I mean, our, our goal is to, uh, I mean, we're not gonna have vendors in front of restaurants vending. I mean, that's not gonna work well. So we're gonna work with them and find them a, a, a alternate location, uh, that would work for them. Uh, and our preference to be close to a, 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 a city facility or something else that's, that's open. Uh, so it's, the process is still being developed. Uh, you know, there is the discussion about pockets on the streets and how, how that's gonna be opened up for everybody, including street vendors. If a pocket is opened up on the street, can everyone use it, uh, and it's not just that one restaurant? Can everybody in the area use it as, as a way to run? So it's gonna be balancing the two, and that's why we wanted to have it all come through centralized system to work through it. And what we're gonna do is help those, uh, food vendors find the locations that they can safely, uh, vend without creating, um, you know, it's any issues. So our job is to work with them. Uh, if they tell us where the area, we'll work with them on finding the location that would work for everyone.
Okay. And, uh, colleagues, since we don't have virtual hands on this, this program, just give me a signal. And, uh, Mr. O'Farrell already did. So, Mr. O'Farrell, uh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Adele. Thank you, everyone, for your report on this matter. Uh, the whole idea of the permit fee was so that the city could have full cost recovery. Uh, and so my question is, of the fees that have collected, uh, and Adele, you clarified that they, that it's a hundred thirty thousand and not a hundred and fifty, but that's immaterial. The fees that have collected, have they been utilized yet? Or are, are those fees on hold in an account? So in other words, what would be the hit to us? Would it simply be refunding fees that have not been replicated? Or would it be refunding fees that have been allocated?
So in, in, in the, the budget this, this year, uh, there was an estimate in the revenue column that we will generate revenue. I think the C, the CAO is on the call too. Uh, uh, so we estimated a revenue based on the permits. So there was expenditures in terms of staff time and, and efforts on, on my staff and from investigators allocated for this program and the outreach, uh, uh, efforts, uh, that is expenditure that haven't, that, that revenue that came in, the one thirty, is actually to pay for expenditures that have occurred, which is much, much more than the hundred thirty thousand. I think it's a couple of million dollars, two point something, million dollars. So the general fund has been subsidizing this. So that hundred thirty thousand is probably already had been put back in the, uh, in the, in the expenditures, uh, and has been used already.
Okay, and so the, the, the rough amount of refunding is a hundred fifty thousand, is that accurate?
Yeah, it's about a hundred thirty or a hundred thirty to a hundred fifty, that's right.
A hundred thirty, okay. And so that would have to come out of our, uh, current revenue, budget revenue?
Has to come up from the general fund, uh...
From the general fund revenue, thank you, okay. Uh, and then, um, you mentioned the county, Adele. So do, the county, uh, they have their own permit fees for all street vendors as well. Is there any talk, uh, for the county to lower or eliminate their fees?
That, that, that is, that is one of the discussions. Is, for example, there's a, a seven hundred fifty dollar fee to review the plans for a, a cart, a food cart. And what we wanna do is create a uniform pre-approved cart that doesn't have to go through a whole process of checks and approvals and, and people paying seven hundred fifty for each, uh, approval. So we wanna get that done. There's also the training and the certification of food handler. Uh, you know, uh, we, we actually did some training recently. But I think what I do is, my idea is actually helping and streamlining the process of training food vendors and food handling so they can get their certification at a discounted price. Uh, and, and they have to pay a lot of money to go through the class and the amount of money. But then the permit itself is also expensive. So, but the biggest cost is the actual cart itself. That's what, what the, what the, what the vendors have a, a concern with. We're looking at everything. I think we need to have this simplified, this streamlined, and, and I think we need to get your support working with the county partners to make sure we find solutions for this. This is not gonna be simple, but I think we can come together and find something that can work for everyone.
So we literally have a, a, a traditional, uh, responsibility than the county. So, so that, that request of them to, uh, work in co- with the city might become in the form of a resolution. So I just wanna put that out there. Uh, we can ask and be kind and, uh, cajole all we want, but we have no power over the decision-making. So it, it would have to be a collaborative approach wherein we officially state some sort of position. I just wanna put that out there. Um, and then lastly, so the original motion, Mr. O'Farrell's original motion, uh, was amended to, to address what we're discussing now, which is fully supported, no issue there. Uh, however, uh, we also know that, so, so fees for vending go to public works, fees for restaurants go to the Office of Finance. Uh, so the Office of Finance is requiring restaurants to pay their various renewal fees, including operating fees. Uh, and then on top of that, restaurants are currently incurring penalties based on COVID-19 and late fees, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, I would argue, and we've, we've been hearing from restaurants and probably many of you have as well, um, about forgiveness for their fees as well. Uh, and so, uh, Mr. Chair, if, if you, if you don't mind, uh, we would love to get a report, uh, to work with the Office of Finance on what type of fees restaurants are also incurring. Um, so that, you know, there's an overall more fair approach, uh, for, for everyone who is, uh, selling food, whether from a cart or whether from a brick and mortar establishment.
That, that sounds great. I'm, I'm happy to include that in the recommendation that we, uh, include a report back on fees from restaurants and that how they could possibly be subsidized as well.
Thank you.
And then, Ms. Rue, you had your head up, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, um, and I completely agree with the direction that we're going on in this whole discussion. And Councilmember O'Farrell, uh, basically asked a lot of the questions that I did, uh, that I was, that I had as well. Um, and so, but I, 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 I am in favor of pretty much, um, in a way, of helping out these restaurants, even though these aren't, um, relatively nominal versus the health department's fees for, uh, food vending. Um, I think every penny counts. And, um, so on that note, I, I am all for, uh, uh, returning or whatever direction we go on. But I would like to know from the CA, I, I, whoever it is that could answer this question, um, now that we're moving on this program a little bit more, how much does it actually cost to administratively process a permit application without the enforcement portion? Cause I know the two ninety-one was, and, and the five, five hundred something and the two ninety-one were kind of ballpark figures, but it looks like the actual administration fee might be lower?
This in the culture here with the CAO's office. We have not done that calculation, but we'll be happy to report back if that is an instruction from the committee. Um, the two ninety-one was based on the full cost recovery of the program using the, um, inter, uh, the, uh, a different formulation for the indirect costs, and that's how we got to a lower number for the two ninety-one. But as far as the administrative portion only, we can do that calculation if that's, uh, report you would like us to report back on.
Yes, and, Mr. Chair, if that could be part of it. I'm not saying that's what I wanna implement now, but I think we should get a better figure of the actual, just the, uh, administrative fee, so we could, uh, calculate that in, in the future as we go forward, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, so you, you wanna report on the administrative, not the, not the cost of enforcement?
Yes, just the processing of a sidewalk vending permit application. I've heard that it might be as low as a hundred and eighty dollars or even lower. So, um, so later on, when we do, uh, decide to implement a fee, maybe it could be just for the actual administration fee. Um, and the second question that I had was, um, you know, is there any ways for the vendors to enter into an installment plan for the permit fees?
We, it's, it's very difficult, uh, to do that. We don't have the system to do that, uh, at this point. But, um, to me, the biggest cost is actually just the county permit, um...
Yeah.
So that's where the cost is. Two ninety-one, I think it's, and I'm not saying it's a small amount. It's every penny counts for everyone at this point. Uh, but I think really the focus should be on how we can reduce the cost for the public, the county health permit. That's what the huge cost is, the cost of the change of operations, uh, and, and, uh, it's very difficult, probably will cost us more to process installments than the actual two ninety-one.
It's a good point. Uh, but you know, i- i- if, uh, cause this is something that we're not gonna do right now anyways, because obviously, uh, we're trying to help out the street vendors. Uh, but if we could maybe also have a report back on that, um, I do hear you that it might be nominal, especially if the fee that we end up charging is, becomes even less. But if we could, if we could also have an, uh, instructing the Streets LA to report back on the feasibility of creating some type of payment installment program for sidewalk vending permit processing, um, that would be, uh, a, a nice additional report that I would like to add.
Great, happy to include that in the, uh, in the measure as well. And, and I'd imagine either, uh, and, and that's, that's, that's for, uh, amending item six versus item five, I believe. But yeah, I guess, yeah.
Sorry about, yeah, sorry about that.
When I work with, we're, we're taking up both together, so it makes, I, I, I just, for clarity's sake, was doing it. But that's your right to bring it up. And maybe we can do the, the, um, the installment plan or, or there may be a, uh, either a, a nonprofit partner or someone who could, you know, who could be, be an intermediary on an installment plan. There's probably a lot of ways to do it. Um, but we could get a report back with, with different options.
It's a great idea. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. Um, Ms. Scannell, you have comments?
Yes, I can, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members, uh, and the city staff. And Adele, your report, Dan, thanks so much. This is, um, um, an effort here. We heard loud and clear from our, our small businesses and, and our, uh, restaurateurs who took a significant hit, happy to see this motion move forward. I'm happy with the recommendations provided by the chair and staff. Um, we have seen outdoor dining be very effective, uh, in, um, different parts of the city, in Hollywood, in the west side. Uh, we were, um, been working on an outdoor dining plan for the downtown San Pedro area for the last few years, finally, um, approved the parklets late last year. And, um, COVID-19 hit, and we, um, had an opportunity to move on an initiative, the one before you, along with the mayor's office, uh, to allow, um, the expansion of, of, of city streets and sidewalks, uh, to help increase the square footage of our, our restaurants. Um, the timing was everything for us. We were able to show the city, um, a, a pilot, um, on that same day when we shut down the street in downtown San Pedro on Sixth Street. The restaurants, um, were able to, um, to serve because that same day, uh, the county came forward on reopening our, our restaurants. And, um, we also heard loud and clear, not only from the restaurateurs, but the residences, you know, once and next time we could shut down the street. So I'm happy to see a, a process move forward. Um, at the same time, we, we, we left out, um, the other, our, our other micro businesses and entrepreneurs, our street vendors who've been working diligently, tirelessly over the past six years to create a regulated legal process for street vending. As you know, this committee, along with the, the entire body, approved a permit process, and then COVID-19 hit. So happy that this amending motion before us, um, uh, will establish a, an expedited and no, uh, cost citywide permit process for street vendors, uh, during the, uh, local emergency. So appreciate the work that's been done by, um, the chair and this committee, and I'm looking forward to continuing to help our, our small businesses and micro businesses throughout the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Scannell. So, uh, as stated earlier, I'm gonna recommend that, uh, we adopt the motion and adopt the amending motion recommendations two and three, this is for item five, and amend recommendation four to read, request departments report back on including sidewalk vending in the LA alfresco dining program. And in addition on, on item five, to add Mr. O'Farrell's request for a report back about the fees from restaurants, and opportunities there. And then for item six, recommending that we adopt, uh, recommendations A, B as in boy, and D as in David in the Board of Public Works report, extend for the sidewalk and park vending permit program enrollment period through December thirty-first, twenty twenty, uh, as well as adding in Mr. Rue's, uh, two amendments. Uh, one was, the first one is to have the CAO report back on the cost of processing a sidewalk vending permit application. And the second is to instruct Streets LA to report back on the feasibility of creating a payment installment plan for the sidewalk vending permit process. I believe I captured?
Mr. Chair, just one, 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 one little addition, and that is, uh, restaurant renewal fees with penalties, current penalties as well included.
Okay, so for item, for, I'm, I have to, the, the, the clerk will capture what Mr. O'Farrell just said?
Thank you.
Okay. So, so yours is gonna report on what types of fees and penalties restaurants are incurring and how they can be subsidized in addition to sidewalk vending. Um, correct? Okay, with those amendments, um, let's prepare to vote. As amended, first, first per item, well, I guess we take item five and six together as, as they've both been amended. We, can we do that, uh, Ms. Kid, or do we need to do two separate votes?
You may do them together as amended, Mr. Chair.
Great. Let's, let's go ahead and do that then, thank you.
Lumenfield?
Lumenfield, aye.
Rue?
Aye.
O'Scaino?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Four votes to approve as amended with additional amendments made during this meeting, Mr. Chair.
Wonderful, thank you. So we'll go back to the top of the agenda. One was not set, we'll move on to item number two. Ms. Kid, if you'd please read that one into the record.
Item number two is a verbal report from the Public Works bureaus relative to general discussion of their COVID-19 response.
And, and before we kick this off, I really wanna thank all the Public Works bureaus for not skipping a beat during these challenging times. You guys have been keeping the city functioning, you know, while we're all, uh, you know, everyone is, is observing social distancing and, and trying to work remotely. Uh, the bureaus have been basically taking advantage of that time and with, with decreased traffic and everything else, and, and really just leaning in to get the work of the city done. So I'd like to ask Adele, who's the Director of Streets LA, to, uh, kick us off with this discussion. Adele?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Thank you for recognizing the staff, uh, and, uh, thank you to everyone for your support. You know, uh, in Streets LA, we united behind a mission to enhance the path of life for all. Uh, I'm proud of the men and women of Streets LA who continued and have not stopped, uh, delivering core and essential services for full Angelenos during the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, during the COVID-19 pandemic, Streets LA was still, you know, demanding to service the quest, putting power, trimming and planting trees, fixing sidewalks, sweeping our streets and renewing our roads. But with so many people staying at home during the safer order and the, and relaxed, uh, parking enforcement, we've adapted to the new normal quickly, and, uh, we've shifted our street paving from residential streets to major commercial corridors. Similarly, we've done the same on moving some of the streets weeping to the major commercial corridors that we wanted to do for a long time. This is what we have referred to as the adapt program. With this change, our roads are less of an impact on people remaining at home with reduced noise and disruption and not worrying about moving their cars when we pave. Projects got completed faster and continue to be completed faster due to our ability to schedule projects in usually high-traffic areas. The condition of our... The condition of our pavement will improve on heavily traveled corridors. Our commuters headed to essential jobs will see improvements and as our crews continue to prepare high priority corridors more quickly and cost effectively. And our workers will be safer with more room for us to operate and work. The streets, uh, if you look at streetsla, uh, dot la city dot org slash ADAPT, you will see the streets that we have completed under the ADAPT program and what's being scheduled. Our plan is to continue till September thirtieth with the ADAPT program. And to date, we have completed over a hundred and twenty lane miles of commercial corridors, uh, across our city. You know, some of them, how do you see downtown, some of Ventura Boulevard in the valley, San Vicente in Hollywood, all the way in, in San Pedro, uh, and right now, we're, we're paving, uh, Sepulveda in the valley, uh, we're doing Fifth and Sixth Streets and Olive in downtown. Those are streets that in need of a lot of repair and those have been a huge concern because of traffic easily and have, we have been able to do that in a very effective, efficient way. The same time, as we've been talking for a while on optimizing our street sweeping and in expanding sweeping to commercial corridors, that is a priority for me and as I know it's for you, we're able to shift and because we're, with the cars being parked at home, not being able to really reach the curbs in residential, uh, homes, we actually shifted, uh, sweeping to commercial corridors and it's amazing amount of debris and, and trash that we're able to remove to make our streets and environment, uh, clean. We actually, uh, since April tenth, when we started ADAPT, we've swept over sixty-eight hundred curb miles and we removed about twenty-four hundred cubic yards of debris and trash. We've implemented safe practices to protect our workers by bringing in hand washing stations, uh, hand sanitizing, uh, for our workers. Uh, we actually deployed, uh, ten safety ambassadors to make sure our staff are practicing safe distancing and continuing to be healthy and has been very effective. Uh, the morale is very high with our staff, knowing that they're making the city safe and providing hope. Uh, we held our second street summit virtually. Uh, we actually continued to meet our stakeholders and advisory council virtually. We held, uh, recently our advisory council meeting and also the vending stakeholder meeting. We're also supporting many of the programs that, that are necessary for the public health orders and reopening of the city. Our staff, uh, stood up the program to support farmers markets and making sure they have a procedures and protocols for safe distancing and public, uh, safety. Uh, that's something we, we, we did overnight and we're able to get all farmers markets operational. We are inspecting essential businesses in the first phase, uh, to look at which ones can open. But now we're helping with the bits, working with the bits on how to do the curbside, uh, uh, you know, uh, commercial work, but also now making sure everybody's practicing safe distancing. Our staff also are part of disaster service workers, that we have staff working to support our seniors, having food to eat, providing support to our homeless population, uh, and those are essential services. We've increased our cleaning of our benches and, and, uh, and, uh, transit shelters, uh, double that cleaning. We've installed over three hundred hand sanitizing stations at, uh, at high traffic, uh, transit shelters. And, uh, now with the twenty twenty protest, our staff have really shifted also to ensure that we are keeping the city clean, uh, that the, the, uh, providing a hope for a brighter future for all of us. And I'm so proud of the workers in Streets LA, really putting themselves on the line every single day. Uh, they stepped up to serve our communities and they really stand behind making our streets safe, clean and mobile. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Um, so, that's great. And you know, I realize we're kind of talking about item four as well, as you kind of led into it, why don't we, why don't we formally do that and take up two and four together, uh, since your presentation kind of talks about both? Ms. Kidd, if you could read four into the record and then we can, we can kind of more smoothly talk about both at once.
Just for clarification, Mr. Chair, there will be no action to be taken on item number two. The action will only be on item number four.
Correct.
Item number four is a Bureau of Street Services report in response to a twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget recommendation relative to street sweeping route optimization.
Okay, also, I don't know if there's any action on four either, it's just a report.
Well, I'll, uh, if it's, um, Mr. Chair, um, one of the things that we've talked about, and I think one of the questions that we ask our stakeholders, what's the number one priority they have, is they want to expand street sweeping. And that was an important thing that they asked us to do. And that's a priority for, uh, our department, I know it's priority for your committee and, and, and you, Mr. Chair, and the council members. Uh, so we've been working through the budget process to bring in some money, uh, to expand and, and, and use the same resources, but work smarter and change the frequency of cleaning. Uh, but I have, uh, Sherman Torres. Sherman Torres is the head of our maintenance division in Streets LA. Sherman has been amazing in leading the effort on maintaining the city. I want to give him the ability to provide an update where we are and what we're doing and, uh, and, and we would go with questions from, from your committee, Mr. Chair. Sherman?
Great, thank you. Welcome. Good morning, Mr. Chair, good morning, council members, city staff. Um, as Adele mentioned, we have been, we, we have made some adjustments, um, to our sweeping program due to COVID. And one of the key things that we have been talking about for some time is how do we increase our, our sweeping program without adding additional resources? And what we have learned from the COVID, uh, challenge and through the ADAPT program is that we can, without adding resources, expand our program successfully. Um, over, over time, since April, when we started the ADAPT program, we, we have realized that we can expand the sweeping program by kind of, uh, shifting resources from the residential areas where we know currently there is no enforcement due to COVID. And so we take some of those resources and put it on our major corridors and we have seen tremendous improvement on those corridors where they have been neglected for some time due to lack of funding and lack of resources. So with the new program, new optimization plan, is to utilize staffing that we currently have and working with the various council offices and Department of Transportation to kind of switch over from a weekly sweeping in residential areas to a bi-weekly and using those additional resources and, and the off weeks to do commercial corridors. And I think this will be something that, over time, we will be able to show how much of the city can be swept with the same amount of resources while providing necessary, um, the necessary, uh, uh, resources in the residential areas. So I think currently we have, um, worked with Department of Transportation and identified a, an area in resi- in a residential area in Council District Two where they have placed signs and the sign says no sweeping every other Wednesday, every other Thursday, and identified a nearby route where we were doing weekly sweeping and we will make a swap so that we can do bi-weekly in the, one of the existing routes and take additional resources and doing, and put those in the new route. Now, what this will help us to do is analyze amount of debris collected to see how effective or ineffective this process is going to be. We will monitor amount of debris collected in the new route as well as in the route where we have, where it's not going bi-weekly. And I do believe that we will be able to do this successfully citywide, given, given a little time. Um, we were planning on doing a pilot in this month. However, due to the protest, we had to switch gears to be able to, uh, maintain a level of cleanliness citywide as a result of protest. So that's where we are with the new, the new plan and, um, I'm, I'm hopeful and I'm very excited about this, this transition where we will be able to address more of the city that's not currently being addressed while maintaining a level of cleanliness in our neighborhoods.
Thank you. No, it, it's exciting. Doing, doing more with the, the same resources, uh, you know, is, is innovative and, and, you know, usually requires some new technology or something, but you guys are figuring, figuring out how to use the, the existing, uh, equipment that we have and to be able to stretch it further. And so that's, that's, that's really good government and so I want to thank you for that. Um, when, when does Street Services have an estimate for, of when the MyLA three one one street sweeping notification system can be ready for, for all the residents or implement it?
We are currently working with other departments, Department of Transportation, uh, ITA, uh, General Services, um, to be able to put together what we currently have. I know one of the main things to get this modification pilot off the ground was to have successful, um, GPS installed on all our sweepers. Currently, um, General Services have installed over seventy-seven of those hundreds, hundred, uh, um, systems that we're working with Verizon on and by the end of next week, they will have installed all hundred units. So we are working with each department because there's different components of the pilot itself that requires, um, some new IPOs which were being done to the previous, uh, vendor who, um, is no longer with us. But, so this, this will take us a little more time, but we are successfully working as a group to be able to get something off the ground fairly soon.
That's great. And then, you know, just one quick question about the, um, you know, we're doing this great, doing more not only with the street sweepers, but with the ADAPT program. Uh, have you quantified how much you're actually saving, as an association, saving high quarter, high, high quarter, that you're able to, is this something quantifiable?
You know, the question was asked for me when I did the interview with the Atlantic. Uh, we're getting a lot of, uh, fuss on this, being smart and how we're adapting. So in my estimate, I think there's probably twenty to thirty percent, uh, less, uh, uh, time and less workforce. Uh, in some places even more, like Seventh Street downtown, when we paved it, it was done on two, in two days. We actually profiled it one day and we paved it next day. If that had to be done on a regular, um, business, regular, normal days, uh, that would have probably four days. So even more, I mean, it's just the amount of traffic that you have to deal with, the, the window of time you have to pave, that all was, uh, much better with this. So I think we've done a lot more. I mean, we've done a hundred and twenty lane miles and we'll do the analysis on the time it takes and all that. But at least I would say, you know, probably thirty percent, uh, saving in, in resources and time and doing more. Uh, I'll tell you, this year, uh, you know, without, with, even with the COVID nineteen pandemic, we will have a record year in deliverables in Streets LA. And I'll, I'll get you, I'll share with you some of the numbers and metrics and we will have record, uh, in terms of alleys being paved, over a hundred fifteen alleys being paved. We'll talk about concrete streets, we have equivalent about fifty lane miles of concrete streets being done. Failed streets, we have equivalent of sixty lane miles done. It's going to be a record in terms of what we've delivered with your support and the program we have. We've reached record in terms of tree trimming, uh, and, and what we're doing. And, and we're going to basically also, we're moving on the inventory, uh, of tree inventory that's moving forward, identifying, uh, the trees, but also identifying location where you plant. It, to me, it's, it's going to be, it's an exciting year what we've done and I'm hoping that we continue kind of moving forward. Uh, I think we've made huge strides in enhancing the quality of life and our condition with your support and your help. And we're going to continue working. I know there's, there's some tough times and I, we're going to adapt to it, we're going to work through it. But one thing I want to tell you is, is the only solution for us to continue serving the public is we need to start thinking smarter. We need to become, trying to find ways to do more with less and stretching our dollars. You have that commitment of us, we're going to do everything we can to minimize the, any reduction impact on services in the future years as the revenue is going down. Uh, and, and I have the, the most capable people think a lot, we talk about street sweeping and Sherman. You know, if, if you look at the amount of resources you need to double, uh, the coverage of the city, would have been a huge amount of money and resources that we don't, we can't afford. But we're doing it by being smart, we're doing it by shifting resources. We're doing asset management system and looking at ways to bring resources together, uh, to deliver more, uh, in the same area. So, uh, so we're excited, uh, even with, you know, the, what we're dealing with in terms of revenue and the cuts and all that, we're going to be continuing to be committed to be in, looking for ways to structure dollars and move forward and provide the best services, uh, that we owe our community. So thank you.
Colleagues, any additional questions or comments? Adele or Sherman? Nope, seeing, seeing none? Uh, we, and, and Ms. Kidd, you are correct, there is an item, there is an action item on, on four. So two was a discussion only and four is a note and file, uh, as the, there's already a similar budget request pending in Budget and Finance. So without objection, we will note and file item four.
May I please call the roll, Mr. Chair?
Oh, that's right. It's an audio meeting, so we should do it that way. Okay, please, call the roll.
Mr. Bloomingfield?
Bloomingfield, aye.
Rue?
Uh, aye.
Uscaino?
Aye.
And O'Farrell?
Aye.
Thank you.
That measure, note and file measure is adopted and we will move now to the remaining, uh, item, which is a discussion item, uh, number seven. If you would read that into the record, Ms. Kidd.
Item number seven is a verbal report from the Bureau of Street Services relative to a request for proposal for street furniture.
Okay, I'd like to invite, uh, Lance O'Shea from Streets LA to walk us through the presentation. And, and as I say, for the public listening, the presentation is available at HTTPS colon slash backslash backslash streetsla dot la city dot org slash council. If you go there, you can get a report which he's going to walk us through. So, uh, take it away, Lance.
Good morning. Uh, this is Lance, for the Bureau of Street Services, and I manage the city's, um, core and street furniture program. I'm just going to try to run through this, uh, uh, update in consideration of everybody's time. I'll just kind of highlight some stuff and I'm going to try to share my screen right now, um, just so folks can see what I'm blocking. So give me a second, let me see if I can do this right here. Okay, and, like this. All right, so here we go. So, uh, we've, uh, we've, since December, we've, uh, been following up on the council's direction to pursue a new RFP, uh, that includes an RFI process, uh, to help inform the RFP. And so, starting in, uh, January, we went ahead and, um, started preparing for this RFI process. So again, uh, back in December, there was a number of things that council asked us to do, um, but again, a lot of it was to go ahead and expand the program, provide equitable distribution of our furniture, um, you know, to serve as a, uh, as the focal point for our, our transit system to increase, uh, transit use. And, um, so part of that, that we, part of the things that we've done since January was, uh, we started a, uh, formed a steering committee just for our, uh, new program and we decided to call our new program, the Sidewalk and Transit Admonities Program, or STAT. And so that's why you see the STAT on the screen right now. Um, and that was, it's part to differentiate it from our current street furniture program, so we can, we can tell the difference when we're talking about that. Um, through the RFI, we were hoping that we'd be able to find, um, additional, uh, business models that we might be able to do. Uh, we wanted to be able to, uh, innovate and bring new technologies into our STAT program. Uh, we tried to do outreach to a number of different, uh, folks, including the out-of-home industry, but also the design industry. We did, uh, we reached out to the local business community. We also set, sought input from, uh, advocacy organizations, uh, to provide input into our RFI process. And so we actually started the RFI process up by releasing the document, uh, announcement of it in February, late February. We actually had the briefing session in March, which is right when the COVID nineteen protocol started taking effect. But despite that, we still had a very good turnout. We had over, uh, seventy-seven people attend that represented thirty different type, uh, more than thirty different companies. And we- And we also received a number of questions, over 75 questions, as a part of that RFI process. And so, as part of the RFI, we also issued a questionnaire that we'd asked respondents to reply to, and nine companies actually responded to that RFI questionnaire. And what it really kind of showed us was that there wasn't a whole lot of new technology out there that we haven't already seen, but we also kind of found out that we needed to kind of focus more on the sustainability side of the program and try to emphasize that through the RFP process, as well as the equitable distribution part of the program. The companies in general understood a lot of the things and goals that we're trying to pursue, including expanded services and revenues. And so, we continue to try to seek out additional information from those companies. The effect of the pandemic right now on us, really, just in brief, the economic situation right now has hit everybody, including the advertising market. And for our partners that we have here with the city, we're seeing decreased revenues in excess of 50%. And so, with the market being down, it affects the timing of issuing the RFP, because one of the things we don't want to do is issue the RFP when the market outlook is very, very anemic, because we foresee that our response to the RFP will be similarly anemic and not necessarily hit all the goals and targets that we want for our program. And so, right now, we're kind of, we're slowing down our pace a bit, but we're still moving forward. Some of the things that we kind of really have to take a look at, because of COVID, is the revenue structure for the program. And one of the things we're really kind of exploring right now is possibly sharing some of the CapEx costs with the company, but also changing the revenue stream, the revenue formula, so that there's no guaranteed fee, but that we just share in the, we just take an equal share of the actual revenues themselves. And what that does is that removes, it allows the city to share the risk with the company, and so, if they do well, we do well. If they don't do so well, then, you know, again, we share that risk. And so, we're really going to try to pursue that particular avenue further. And one of the things that we're doing, we need to also kind of explore regarding the CapEx is where the city could possibly receive such funding. And in this down market, there's a lot of challenges to that, so we're really going to be looking into that a lot further. So, some of the next steps that we're pursuing right now, we're going to complete the RFI, well, completed the RFI, but we're going to continue to complete the RFP prep. We're going to be conducting a virtual networking session earlier this, I mean, later this summer, that allow various components from the advertising industry, as well as fabricators or design committee to come together and hopefully form joint ventures that could better respond to our RFP. We plan to delay the release of the RFP until October, and that is to hopefully see the economic picture kind of gain some traction and rebound, so again, we will receive a better response to our RFP process. We hope to be analyzing and negotiating the RFP with a winning proposal sometime next winter and spring, and then execute the contract late summer, which would give us enough time to transition from our current program to the new contractor. And so, that's basically where we're at right now. And be glad to take any questions or provide any other information you might need.
Great, thank you. I'll just start with, what are the potential drawbacks or the risks with the, you know, delaying the release until October?
The biggest risk is if the economy doesn't really rebound as much as we'd like it to. If the economic outlook is still bleak, then we think that the response we get from the potential proposals will also be similarly weak. It compresses our timeframe a little bit, but we think that even by releasing the RFP in October, it should still give us enough time to successfully negotiate a contract and to have a new contractor in place by late summer of next year.
But one thing, council member, Mr. Chair, the thing that we need to think about hard, and that's really why we're revisiting some of the requirements in the RFP, is we need probably to think hard about the formula in sharing revenue and profit. I think to me, is for us to really bring people in, we need to share in that risk. It's a long-term agreement, and we can create a gradual, graduated fair. So, in the beginning, we will have maybe a, maybe 50/50 share, and as the, as the revenue picks up, will be the increase in share, we will get, but then what we'll do is take away the floor, that they have to commit to paying X million dollars a year regardless of the condition. If we have to put that kind of condition, it's going to, going to give us probably a worse proposal. What I think we need to do is be a partner with whoever's going to propose and create a, what I would say, remove the ceiling and the floor. When they're doing good, we're going to make a lot more money and our share will be a lot more. If they are doing bad, I think we will have to share differently. So, to me, that's why we're rethinking with our experts on this matter of how we can craft this to provide the best alternative for the city, but also recognizing we want something that can support us for the long term. So, I'm comfortable that we can give something, to put something in the RFP to get back some good proposals and give people the comfort that they can propose in this market.
Great, colleagues? Looking for, we don't have virtual hands, but actual hands, Mr. Rue? Anybody, any colleagues have any comments or questions they want to add to this discussion? Okay, Mr. Rue, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a quick question. Is Streets LA envisioning that the RFP also include the network of public restrooms?
Right now, we are making that an option as part of our program. We've, through the RFI process, we've mentioned that the restrooms are of interest to us, but again, we're going to wait for the proposals to see how they might want to handle that. We know that we, our current program does handle our current APTs, and so, we'll be exploring various options too besides that. If proposals do not come back that include some type of public toilet function, we'll be seeking alternative methods to kind of continue that program.
Well, that's good to hear, but, Mr. Chair, I mean, I would not, I would ask if we not make it optional, but actually include it, because most major cities include public restrooms in their street furniture, and I think LA should also do the same. It's, it's, there is a lot of options that can be had if we include public restrooms.
This is a discussion item, so we're not taking any actions on it today. It certainly, I hear what you're saying, there is also, and Adele maybe can speak to it, or Lance, there's potential downside in including it, which, you know, in terms of if it gives us a skewed proposal and whereas we could take the money, the saved money, and we could dedicate it to restrooms potentially. I don't know what the best route is, but I know that there's pros and cons to it, and if either of you want to speak to those pros and cons, that would be...
Well, I'll speak to my thoughts on it, and I felt from my experience that the toilets, public toilets have been really the most difficult thing to get a good proposal from anybody. I think toilets are a public health requirement, something that we have to invest in, and certainly regardless of what is this contract or not, and I think we'll have a lot more better flexibility in the technology that we bring in, the type of we bring in if we do it separately. But speaking to that, we want to keep that on the table, that if somebody feels that it makes their proposals better and they think anchored to their, to their business model is the toilet, like the existing company we have today here, that their business model is anchored around toilets, then we allow that to happen as part of that proposal. But if somebody is in the advertising market that do not have toilets as part of their portfolio and strength, but we can get a better proposal from them, that we accept that with the option that that money can be turned quickly around and to do installation of public toilets across the city with maintenance. We've done the analysis of where we think toilets have to be put in place, and we try to get our partners in Metro to partner financially with us, but I still think we need to keep it available, and let's decide when the proposals come. But I agree with you, it's the number one priority, we need to have toilets in the city and to be properly maintained and to be safe. One good thing that we're working on, looking at right now for you to consider, that we're actually in the middle of this COVID discussion, we're looking at a prototype to do as part of the 14 toilets we have in downtown LA and other parts of the city. We're looking at doing a pilot to show if we can put a hand washing station and a hydration station attached to outside door, outside of a public toilet. We're going to be doing a prototype to look at it. I think that's going to be the new model of doing things to allow for folks to, one, wash their hands safely, and it's going to be maintained with the toilet, but then also hydrate and fill the water bottle. And so, we're thinking, and I'm going to make sure that we heard the counsel on Drew, and we will figure out how we can make sure that that's accurate.
Thank you for that, Adele, and I like the flexibility and that you're already pre-thinking about public restrooms and toilets, so, but I just wanted to make sure that was, that our city was in line with other cities. Great, thank you.
Good coordination, thank you, Mr. Rue. Colleagues, any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a discussion item, so no action is required. Miss Kidd, is that clear to the desk?
Yes, Mr. Chair, no further items remain.
Okay, well then, thank you, everybody, for being part of this meeting, and this meeting is now here.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bye, everyone.
Thank you all.